We do need a motion at this point to, I guess, we need to move the recognition, one and two, for what we just, the wonderful presentations and words that we just heard. So is there someone on the board that would make a motion for me?
Madam President, I'll make a motion to move recognition this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn.
Dinoff will second.
Thank you, Mr. Dinoff, I have a second. Is there anyone that has any discussion or comments at this time? No, okay. Mr. Mara, roll call.
Dinoff.
Yes.
Hartman.
Yes.
DePrima.
Yes.
Ellis Foster.
Yes.
Mongan.
Yes.
Singh.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Dunn.
Absolutely yes.
Andriani.
Yes.
Resolutions one and two pass.
All right, thank you very much. At this point, it's usually our superintendent's report in progress towards goals and... Okay. Besides the wonderful recognition that he just hosted, Mr. Sittadino does have some information for us.
We have two brief items. First, I'm going to, through the superintendent's report, pass it over to Dr. Hoker. She has some updates for the public and the board on our goals towards schools of character and our practices that have been awarded through the Character.org. Dr. Hoker?
So many of our guests have exited the auditorium, so I'm speaking to the few that are left and to our TV audience that I'm hoping is out there listening, because this is also great news. I am certainly congratulating all of our recipients tonight, and in addition, would like to share, you know, this is a perfect evening to share the additional accolades to our staff and students. As a result of our partnership with Character.org, we've had the pleasure of working with colleagues across the state, throughout the country, and even internationally. Our Old Bridge teams have welcomed colleagues into our schools to share with them our journey and our success. In many of our conversations, the question that arises is how do we get to where Old Bridge is today? My answer is always that we have a committed staff and community that works collaboratively to make the positive culture and climate a priority. We measure our success by the success of our students, who continue to be recognized in all areas, including academics, sports, arts and culture, and citizenship. We're fortunate to have our former students, who continually give back to our district well after they have left. What we have done here on Old Bridge is remarkable and has both a local and global impact. Our students are part of the process of making a difference in the lives of others and making things better for the greater good. The 11 principles established by Character.org have guided our journey along with our core values and have taught our students the value and importance of putting others first and doing the right thing. It is no surprise to me that four additional schools have been named 2016 National Schools of Character. I proudly recognize these schools tonight and the hard work and perseverance that has earned them the title 2016 National School of Character. Congratulations to Cooper Elementary School, Grissom Elementary School, Carl Sandburg Middle School, and to Shepherd Elementary School. Shepherd School has earned this honor for the second time, demonstrating the sustainability of the practices and programs established more than five years ago. In addition to our four schools receiving national status as schools of character, three schools, Cooper, Shepherd, and Memorial Schools, have each earned awards for promising practices in their schools. Each practice must be tied to one of more, one or more of Character.org's 11 principles. The Cooper Readers of the Pack, Memorial Husky Prowling Pillows, and Shepherd Abilities Awareness Programs have established ethical, motivating, and inspirational environments for students of all abilities to experience success. Congratulations to all. Thank you, and congratulations to our school and community for earning these honors. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hoker, and thank you to every member of our community, but especially our educational staff, for making that possible. Just two, just an update on one item. In the Board pack, you'll see there is an elementary and secondary education action plan item. When we originally see the information from the state and the Department of Education, I reported to you that Olbridge School District across every subgroup across the district had a 95% participation rate and therefore did not have to do an action plan. We received new information, a little late in the game, from the Department of Education, that if you had a subgroup in a pocket school, you still needed to do an action plan for that one subgroup in one school. So we had to do action plans for Southwood School and Olbridge High School for some of the subgroups that were not above the 95%. I challenged the Department of Education to address the 95% issue, especially at Olbridge High School, as students who are aware until, not until 2021, is it a graduation requirement? So many might not take the examination. And two, those who do diligently take the examination and pass examination, why would they take it again? So it'd be very difficult to achieve that 95%, especially at Olbridge High School. So you have those two items in there. I also want to draw attention to, and more of, I guess, a progress towards community goals, state goals, national goals, is the, I've talked about every month, is the opiate and drug abuse problem that not only faces Olbridge, but the state and the nation, and it has a greater impact on us, its educators here in Olbridge. Since that time, when I spoke about the passing of Olbridge student Jose Torres, I've since had to attend another funeral for Don Kenderich, another student of mine at Salk School, who graduated and was 21-years-old. The reaction to this as a community, as a nation, is not strong enough, in my opinion. We are working with Karen Torteris and Mayor Henry. We've received a grant through them to have a speaker from, a professor from Rutgers University, who specializes in this. His name is John Krieger, and he's now addressing all 11th-grade health classrooms on this problem, to educate them, to make them aware. And his presentation, which I sat in, two of them the other day, presented some real hard facts to these students. And like I said to you before, and I asked the students, I was in the class too, and I sat with them, and I said, you know, there's not one of you can tell me that you didn't know that drugs are bad, or heroin's bad, opiates are bad. Everyone knows. It's the fact that, that they don't feel, or they're trusting where they're getting them from, and, you know, that we have to do better in letting our students know that we love them and we protect them, so they don't take those risks. You know, I was sitting the other day and watching a documentary, and you'll see where I'm going with this, I hope, on Africa, on orangutans. And they took orangutans who were orphaned, injured, and they spent years with them to rehabilitate them. They isolated them, they helped them heal, they then took time to drive them to very remote places that only very special vehicles can get to, so that poachers could never reach them. And there, when they got there, to make sure that they were acclimated to the food and the vegetation, that they spent months with them there again, to make, before releasing them to the jungle. And then, once they released in the jungle, they had people there to ensure that their acclimation was well-received and the orangutans had a healthy life. And I said, "That's beautiful, but what does it say about our world, that we don't do that for human beings? That we have human beings, our youth, who aren't getting that kind of service?" So, you know, hopefully, you know, when I go over my goals, and I just went over the goals with the Board of Education, my personal goals, district goals, and target goals for my own contract, it really doesn't matter to me, at the end of the day, if we have, you know, the highest SAT scores, if we have national schools of character. If, if at the end of the day, you know, our youth are graduating from Olbridge High School and within years dying because of something that's preventable, then, you know, I'm not doing my job and we're not doing our job. So we need to do better, we need to work together. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sittadino. Mr. Mara, any correspondence? No. I have one letter that was addressed to the President of the Board from Character.org. Certainly not going to read the entire letter. A lot of it has to do with what Dr. Hoker has just announced. But one thing I do want to mention, and that is, last year, we had national schools of character, state schools of character, district school of character, and those designations are five years, I believe. This year, the four, Shepherd, Sandburg, Cooper, and Grissom, were named the 2016 National School of Character, and they are four additional out of 68 schools that were bestowed this honor around the country. So it's a small, select group that get this honor, and I just wanted to mention that we are in a place where we should be very proud of what we've been doing in that regard. All righty. Special committee reports. I know Ms. Hartman said you had one. Are you ready?
Yes.
Okay.
The Board of Ed Curriculum Visual and Performing Arts Committee met on May 9. Dr. Calandria presented an end-of-year report on the district's response to intervention program. The program is in its second year of implementation at the elementary level and the first year at the middle school level. Dr. Calandria provided data in support of the program's effectiveness, including an approximate 50% decrease in kindergarten-through-five child study team referrals from 119 in the 2013-14 school year to 61 in the current school year. Next year, the program will be expanded to both mathematics and language arts in all middle school grades. Dr. Tui presented a proposal for the revised delivery model for speech and language services. The model known as Three Colon One Process is different from the caseload model insofar as providing greater flexibility in scheduling of direct and indirect services. Three days are used for direct services and one day for indirect. Most importantly, the new model will help address the issue of student services lost to absenteeism. Sharaw School Principal, Mrs. Montori, and Vori School Principal, Mrs. Lowry, presented on the Guided Reading Professional Learning Pilot, in which their staffs participated this year. The program offered through Rutgers Center for Literacy Development provided all staff members with intensive coaching on the district's chosen reading instruction method. This program will be offered to all elementary teachers next year on the same building-based approach through completing the elementary reading staff development. The members of the curriculum committee engaged in a video conference with Olbridge High School graduate Andrew Chafes. Mr. Chafes is a co-founder and CEO of the digital learning management system, NoteBowl. Mr. Sittadino discussed the plans to pilot this LMS at the high school during the 2016-17 school year, to determine if it might be appropriate and useful to support the district's alternative adult high school slated for implementation in the 2017-18 school year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hartman. Mr. Dinoff?
Yes, Madam President, thank you. A few days ago, I attended the New Jersey School Board Association's semi-annual delegate assembly, and it was attended by over 150 school board members throughout the state, through all 21 counties. And at a future meeting, I'll provide a brief update, and I'll speak in detail about the five resolutions that were passed. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Dinoff, thank you. I know we have some meetings next week. Does anybody want to address those dates? Publicly announce them?
Yes, Madam President. Buildings, grounds, and transportation will have a meeting on Wednesday, May 25, at 8:00 PM. We will be discussing the infrastructure improvements regarding our ESCO and ESOP program. So if you want to attend and participate, you're more than welcome. That's the 25th at 8:00 PM at the Administration Building. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Dunn, thank you. Anybody else? All right, moving on. All right, at this time, do we have any discussion on any of the facilities information? No, okay. Hearing of residents will now open the meeting up to the public. If anybody has any comments, questions, on agenda items only at this time? Lights are a little tough. No? Curriculum, I guess, we're at, moving, we need to move one through nine. May I have a motion?
Dinoff will move curriculum items number one through nine.
Thank you, Mr. Dinoff. Do I have a second?
Hartman will second.
Thank you, Ms. Hartman. At this time, any board members, any discussion? No? Okay. Mr. Mara, roll call, please.
Hartman.
Yes.
DePrima.
Yes.
Ellis Foster.
Yes.
Mongan.
Yes.
Singh.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Dinoff.
Yes.
Andriani.
Yes.
Resolutions one through nine pass.
Okay, thank you. All right, athletics. Most of our coaches are on this, this agenda, so we have athletics one, and two, and three. I need a motion.
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
Thank you very much. Did you hear that? Mr. Singh will second. All right. Any discussion on any of these? No? All right, Mr. Mara.
DePrima.
Yes.
Ellis Foster.
Yes.
Mongan.
Yes.
Singh.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Dinoff.
Yes.
Hartman.
Yes.
Andriani.
Yes.
Resolutions one through three pass.
Thank you. All righty, finance, one through 12.
Dunn will move finance items one through 12.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. May I have a second?
Hartman will second.
Thank you, Ms. Hartman. Any discussion? We're moving quickly now. Okay, Mr. Mara.
Ellis Foster.
Yes.
Mongan.
Yes.
Singh.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Dinoff.
Yes.
Hartman.
Yes.
DePrima.
Yes.
Andriani.
Yes.
Resolutions one through 12 pass.
Thank you. All righty, one through seven, non-certificated personnel office, need a motion and a second.
Hartman will move non-certificated personnel office, one through seven.
Thank you very much.
Dinoff will second.
Thank you very much. Any discussion? Mr. Mara, please.
Mongan.
Yes.
Singh.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Dinoff.
Yes.
Hartman.
Yes.
DePrima.
Yes.
Ellis Foster.
Yes.
Andriani.
Yes.
Resolutions one through seven pass.
All righty, thank you. Nothing under operational, so we move to non-certificated personnel other, one through eight. I need a motion and a second.
Dunn will move non-certificated personnel other, one through eight.
Mongan will second.
Thank you. Mr. Mara, any discussion? Mr. Mara.
Singh.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Dinoff.
Yes.
Hartman.
Yes.
DePrima.
Yes.
Ellis Foster.
Yes.
Mongan.
Yes.
Andriani.
Yes.
Resolutions one through eight pass.
Thank you. All right, this is always the big one, one through 34. I need a motion and a second, and then we can discuss anything that you would like.
Dunn will move certificated personnel items one through 34.
Thank you.
Mongan will second.
Thank you, Ms. Mongan. All righty. Questions and discussion?
Well, Mr. Weber's not here, and I can't add that quickly, but just want to thank the great number of the years of the retirements this year. So just want to make sure we recognize the great service and hope they enjoy it.
Thank you very much for recognizing the dedicated personnel that have decided to leave our district. Any other comments? I don't think so, at this point. Okay, Mr. Mara, roll call.
Dunn.
Yes and no vote on item 19.
Dinoff.
Yes.
Hartman.
Yes.
DePrima.
Yes.
Ellis Foster.
Yes.
Mongan.
Yes.
Singh.
Yes.
Andriani.
Yes.
Resolutions one through 34 pass.
Okay, thank you very much, everyone. All right, transportation, non-certificated personnel transportation, one through five.
Mongan will move.
Dinoff will second.
Thank you, Ms. Mongan and Mr. Dinoff. Any discussion? Okay, Mr. Mara.
Dunn.
Yes.
Dinoff.
Yes.
Hartman.
Yes.
DePrima.
Yes.
Ellis Foster.
Yes.
Mongan.
Yes.
Singh.
Yes.
Andriani.
Yes.
Resolutions one through five pass.
All right, thank you. All right, one through 18, supplies, equipment, and services.
Dunn will move supplies, equipment, and services, items one through 18.
Thank you.
Hartman will second.
Thank you, Ms. Hartman. Any discussion? Mr. Mara?
Dunn.
Yes.
Dinoff.
Yes.
Hartman.
Yes.
DePrima.
Yes.
Ellis Foster.
Yes.
Mongan.
Yes.
Singh.
Yes.
Andriani.
Yes.
Resolutions one through 18 pass.
Thank you. Transportation, one through 12.
Mongan will move.
Dinoff will second.
Thank you, Ms. Mongan. Mr. Dinoff, any discussion? All right, Mr. Mara, roll call.
Dinoff.
Yes.
Hartman.
Yes.
DePrima.
Yes.
Ellis Foster.
Yes.
Mongan.
Yes.
Singh.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Andriani.
Yes.
Resolutions one through 12 pass.
Thank you. Miscellaneous, one through six.
Hartman will move miscellaneous, one through six.
Thank you, Ms. Hartman.
Dunn will second miscellaneous.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Any questions, discussion? Okay, Mr. Mara.
Hartman.
Yes.
DePrima.
Yes.
Ellis Foster.
Yes.
Mongan.
Yes.
Singh.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Dinoff.
Yes.
Andriani.
Yes.
Resolutions one through six pass.
Thank you. Mr. Mara, number 28, is Board Secretary in Board Business. Are you adding anything at this time?
No, I'm not.
Okay. All right. Hearing of residents on any school district, if there's anyone who has any comments or questions, this is the time to do so. Okay, Mr. O'Neil?
I have a few questions for the board tonight. The first one, I think, is a quick one. There's been some discussion of an item in the budget that involves expanding the bandroom at the high school, which is right next door. I wanted to know what other programs will be impacted by that room being expanded and what the impact on those programs will be.
That plan is still in discussion, hasn't been finalized yet.
Okay. All right, my second question, I don't think you'll be surprised, I'd like to know what is the Board of Education's response to the data I provided that illustrates that the district lost $237,000 as a result of the move out of the state health insurance plan this year, and that the employees enrolled in the plan lost an additional $350,000.
Mr. Mara?
Mrs. Andriani, I'll be responding to that question under old business.
Okay.
So you're going, you're going to respond at a point in the meeting at which I won't have an opportunity to respond?
Mr. O'Neil, that's, you're already at that point. You can pose questions to the board, but this is not a dialogue, so you're making public statements to which Mrs. Andriani can recognize somebody up here to respond. So I believe Mr. Mara's plan is to answer the question that you've asked a couple times now, now that the information has been collected.
Okay, I'm going to make some comments anyway, then, since I have no idea what he's going to say, and this is my opportunity. I've brought this issue up months ago, and I've addressed it at every meeting since, including last week's agenda meeting, and I will keep bringing it to the attention of the board and the public until something is done, because it represents a gross mismanagement of the district's resources and a completely unnecessary hardship to the employees.
Mr. O'Neil, I think, at the discretion of Madam President, your points have been made very clearly at the last three meetings, including, I believe, two on television. The point is taken by the board, received by the administration, and will be answered tonight. So unless you have something new to say under the board's bylaws, as listed on page 28 of the agenda, we get your question, and Mr. Mara is prepared to answer it on behalf of the district.
I'll just make one note, then, one quick note. After the arduous negotiations that we went through, there were teachers up here recognized as Teacher of the Year this year, who we negotiated a raise for them when we negotiated this contract. I believe that my calculations are correct, and if they are, despite the association's efforts and the board's willingness at the negotiations table, those individuals still took home less money this year than they had in the past as a result of this health insurance issue. So I do hope that, you know, what I hear from the board tonight is enlightening. I am a little concerned that we're not hearing directly from the board or the board president. I would much prefer that to hearing more from the business administrator. Thank you.
It would be inappropriate for Mrs. Andriani to engage in a numbers-crunching debate as a elected representative. That is the position and province of the administration, specifically the school business administrator, who has been asked by the board to check it out, review your question, and provide a response.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Mr. O'Neil, as you, as you return to your seat, I just, I have a comment to say before we get into old business and where Mr. Mara will address your comments, and that is, the comment that you, that you just made about faculty taking home less money, it's all in a perception. So I don't want people to think that there were faculty members that did not get a raise, because that certainly did not happen, did not happen. If you, if there is less money coming home in a paycheck, there are other variables that pertain to that. And health issue, ever since the state came in and decided that teachers had to partially pay for their contributions for health insurance, has affected all people in education, all of our educators. So I don't want anybody leaving here today thinking that no one had a raise. So I just want to make that point clear. All right. All right. At this point, we're moving into old business. Oh, is there somebody else? No, I didn't see any other hands. All right. Old business, Mr. Mara.
First, I'd like to congratulate all the recipients of the, of the awards tonight. To continue, I'm responding to a number of comments made at the last few televised meetings and correspondence sent to Mr. Sittadino by Mr. O'Neil. We were in the midst of the budget present, preparation, and district-wide health benefit enrollment, so we were quite busy. At televised meetings, Mr. O'Neil made some comments about the business administrator, his words, not mine, in reference to OPRA requests he submitted. An OPA request is a request for documents from government entities. There are strict legal guidelines that must be followed when these requests are received. Mr. O'Neil alleged that the business administrator was not providing him with documents he requested on April 6th in a timely fashion and electronically, and that the business administrator was required to advise him in advance of the cost of this request. As the business administrator and the custodian of records, I complied with all statutory requirements relating to his OPA request. My response to his comments are as follows. With regard to timing, his request was not made on April 6th, as Mr. O'Neil stated publicly. In fact, it was made on April 11th, and it was received by my office on April 12th. The requested documents, consisting of approximately nine hundred pages, were made available to him on April 20th, six business days later. With regard to method, Mr. O'Neil commented that I was responsible to electronically forward these documents to him immediately. In fact, his OPA request specified that he would pick them up, not receive them electronically. With regard to cost, in his OPA request, Mr. O'Neil approved the cost in advance up to $100 per request, so it was unnecessary to advise him in advance of the cost. The sum total of all his requests was about $40. To assist him with his request, in addition to what he requested, I supplied him with relevant information he did not request, well within the approved expense specification. He further alleged that a resolution was on the agenda as a result of his OPA requests, and that this resolution was an attempt to make it more difficult for members of the public to obtain documents. This is absolutely wrong. This resolution appears on the board agenda in Olbridge and in virtually every district in the state of New Jersey. To summarize, Mr. O'Neil's comments were false, and in the case of the rationale for the resolution, it was ridiculous. He extended this discussion about OPA requests to include the terms and condition of the business administrator's contract, the business administrator's responsibilities, the business administrator's compensation, and how a question about the district medical coverage cost is both easy and hard to answer, almost in the same breath, and his disappointment in not being responded to as quickly as he would like. Again, I note this was during budget season, and the nine hundred pages of documents were provided as requested within six business days. In detailing the business administrator's compensation, both salary and health benefit opt-out option, which is available to every employee in a district that is eligible for coverage, both union and non-union, Mr. O'Neil selectively discussed certain benefits while ignoring payments I make per my contract and consistent with the accountability regulations controlling superintendent, assistant superintendent, and business administrator contracts. My next response relates to a document that was handed to me by Mr. Sittadino on the day of the public hearing on the budget. It was given to him the afternoon before by Mr. O'Neil. Mr. O'Neil then chose to discuss that content of that document at that televised meeting. The document was Mr. O'Neil's projection of what he believes the cost to the district would be in 2015 and 16 for medical benefits if we stayed with the state health benefits plan. He compared that projection to his projected cost to the district of the existing plan in 2015-16, which was recommended by me. His estimate is that the move cost the district $240,000. For the record, we changed insurance carriers in April 2015 as a cost-saving mechanism after we were unable to negotiate alternative cost-saving measures with the OBEA. The change resulted in mandatory contributions for dental and vision coverage required by all employees where they had not been required before. In April 2015, we, of course, did not have the benefit of the January 2016 new state plan rates. A year later, in hindsight, and with the benefits of state rates that ultimately went into effect on January 2016, Mr. O'Neil can present numbers in an attempt to Monday morning quarterback, a decision by the board and administration, with the best information it had at that time. The projections, his projections. Typically, with any type of annual cost projection, a list or a clear narrative of assumptions is provided to support the projections. There are some notes listed on his schedule, but there is no supporting documentation for his assumptions. Furthermore, I can assure the board members and the taxpayer that his analysis is premature, incomplete, and missing critical factors. Our well-informed estimate is that the district will save $137,000. Furthermore, this is the first time this question has been asked to this board since I've been the BA in the district. This question could arise every year, because we never know the renewal rates in March or April for the next January. Like all districts, we are forced to build budgets, at least in part, on projected and estimated costs based on the best information that we have at the time, that the budget must be finalized by law. Therefore, to avoid having to address the same question next year, I request Mr. O'Neil provide us with the rates for the state health benefits plan that will go into effect in January 2017, so we can address this issue as part of this discussion, since the 2016-17 budget has just been approved with rate estimates for 1617. What puzzles me is the following. The rate increase on July 1st would have been 28% or $5.6 million, of which employees would have had additional contributions exceeding $1 million, or on average, $1,000 per employee. Although it may be somewhat stressful to complete a new enrollment application with documentation approximately a half hour, the savings to the district, the taxpayer, and to the employees is certainly warranted and necessary. Furthermore, the business office has done everything possible to facilitate this transition. Mr. O'Neil also commented that this was the third change in two years. In this district, we changed last year, and now this year, by my count, that is twice. I'm not aware of the third change that he referenced. At a televised meeting, Mr. O'Neil announced that the average impact on employees was an additional contribution of $700 per year. In later discussions and documents supplied by him, off-camera, he reduced that estimate to $350 per employee. Again, his incomplete analysis excludes the pre-tax nature of those contributions. The net effect of those contributions, and I'm not confirming his numbers, is to reduce the cost, whatever they may be, to the employee by anywhere from 20% to 35%. Mr. O'Neil neglected to mention approximately 100 employees became eligible for the opt-out compensation, up to $3,500, each of who were not paid previously. I will note again, we were working to negotiate changes in the then-current benefits plan in April 2015, but those attempts were not successful at that time, and we had to take other steps to reduce our cost. This resulted, again, in the mandatory contributions for dental and vision coverage required by all employees. I have verbally and in writing advised Mr. O'Neil that this is a complex issue with numerous variables impacting the calculation, but he characterizes my responses as non-responsive or no one cares. His view is that the calculation, as he stated, is both easy and hard. To summarize, or state the facts as they were, are as follows. The decision to change plans made in April 2015, so we knew exactly what the rates were in 2015-16, a 6% increase, was communicated to the OBEA leadership and was critical in terms of negotiations. His characterization of my responses to his recent inquiries were incomplete and taken out of context. Our decision, again, which was communicated to OBEA leadership, was impacted by previous increases in the state health benefit plan, equalling 70% in the prior six years with one year a 25% increase. To repeat for a third time, we were unable to negotiate with OBEA to stay in the state health benefits plan. My view in terms of medical and prescription coverage costs in the future, these decisions will be made based on economics available at the time and in close consultation with our insurance consultant. This was the process last year, is the process this year, and will be the process in the future. These decisions will always be subject to Monday morning quarterbacking to those inclined to do so. Finally, Mr. O'Neil commented at a public meeting that he was not aware of anyone getting a 4.14% increase. I suggest that Mr. O'Neil review each salary guide, where increases for OBEA members reaching the top of the salary guides are above 6.5%. As always, when misinformation is disseminated, especially in a public forum, and especially by a leader of a group consisting of more than 1,000 district employees, I will do my best to address those comments in a timely fashion and lay out the true facts. Whether it reaches those 1,000 or so employees is beyond my control, but the facts are the facts, and these are the facts. Thank you, Mrs. Andriani.
Mr. Mara, just so that I am clear, you... Mr. O'Neil has said that we've, by switching over, we have paid extra between $250,000 or $300,000 that we didn't have to pay. Your calculations are stating that we've saved $130,000. So now, we're looking at, between, and quick math for me, 130 to 240 or 3, we're looking at a $450,000 swing, which is a half a million dollars, when you talk about his addition and what you're saying is savings. That's a lot of money for us, for me to get my head around, about how we're that far apart. So there has to be something in the numbers that would make it easy for me to understand. And I don't have that. So I appreciate you trying to explain, but is there a way in which we can, not here, not tonight, we can sit down and we can take a look at the two sets of numbers to see where that discrepancy, which is very large, is?
I don't think it's my role to attest to the accuracy of the OBEA calculations. I did not use their calculations to come up with my estimate. My estimate is on the basis of what is actually happening, and with all the information, and with all the tax implications associated with it. So I'm prepared to discuss our calculations with the board, but I am not prepared to discuss calculations by, you know, the OBEA and how they arrived at their calculations. If they want to make a case for their calculations, that's up to them.
Okay. We... I have to say that when we're talking about $400,000 difference, that we, you know, and again, you are not going to attest to their numbers, you can only talk about your numbers. But somehow, we're going to have to take, figure out why there's this big of a swing. And when it's, we're looking at $400,000...
Mrs. Andriani?
Yes, sir.
I think it's dangerous to say that you're looking at $400,000. I think that on an OBEA current salary and benefits package, in the vicinity of, Mr. Mara, $82 million, there is a savings of $137, according to your business administrator's business calculations. Now, that data can certainly be shared with the Board of Education when Mr. Mara can provide it.
Okay.
As you quite correctly said, it's not something that's going to be a public live debate, because it's a matter of district operations and board information. Feedback from that could conceivably be provided to the OBEA in the discretion of your business administration and board. We're not going to have an external audit. There is an unlimited number of ways that you can process numbers, especially when we're talking about an enormous business with 1,200 employees plus, with an awful lot of variables, assumptions, and underlying factors giving rise to these changes. It's huge numbers. Statistical significance is judged on the basis of the base numbers, and frankly, on an over $80 million base, the savings of $137,000 is great, but it's not even statistically significant. The claims being made here, of course, there are assumptions. Of course, there is some level of guess made in these, because you're talking about a fiscal year versus a calendar year. This is a discussion for the administration and the board to have on an ongoing basis.
Okay. And when do the auditors come in, Mr. Mara? Because all of this gets covered with the auditor's report, is it not?
What the auditors do is vouch the accuracy of our financial records. They don't make comments on the OBEA's projection of what our medical costs were. They don't even really discuss our budget. They just vouch that what is in the records is accurate, and everything that we've done complies with all the statutory requirements and that we follow the law.
Okay. All right, well, thank you. Ms. Hartman, you're looking at me? No, okay. All right. Well, at this point, is there other old business? You don't have anything else? All right, Mr. Mara, I appreciate you, you know, responding and trying to explain what you can explain, but we're gonna, we'll have another discussion. All right. Board members. All righty, so, new business?
Madam President, can I just say something? New business, please?
Mr. DePrima?
As far as tonight goes, one of the things we all enjoy here is the recognition part of these meetings. In case you haven't noticed, this district is becoming a great school district, and it's because of the people who are recognized here tonight, excuse me, and all our teachers. Thank you for everything you do, and thank you for helping make us what we are becoming, which is a great school district. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. DePrima. Ms. Mongan?
Mrs. Andriani?
Yes, ma'am.
Under new business, I would just like to say, me as one board member, I'm a little disappointed in the tone of the end of the meeting. I am used to boards hearing questions and the response coming from the board and answering the question, and not having to have a response staged at a different time of the meeting when you can't, you know, answer the person that's asking the question. And I think that this whole thing about the budget, and I'm not, you know, I've been on both sides, so I know how difficult it is to prepare, and I know all the documents and all the calculations that go into it, but having had to answer questions of the public and of the union, of various unions, you know, I feel that I just thought it was unprofessional the way it was handled tonight, and I'm just one board member, and, you know, it's disappointing. And I think that, you know, we talk about character and honesty and forthrightness and doing the right thing, and this was not the right thing, the way it was handled. And I think the taxpayers and the public deserve better.
Well, thank you, Ms. Mongan, for your comments, but I will say, this is the third time, second or third time, that this has been brought up, and unfortunately, when we begin to have comments from the podium back and forth, we really don't get anywhere, because people tend to get frustrated. So the forum should really be perhaps at an agenda meeting where things are expressed, and then we can follow it up at that time with a more open discussion. But going back and forth where, through frustration, people begin to make comments that are disparaging, does not help the situation. So it was done this way tonight. We'll think about, as we move forward, I was under the impression that Mr. Mara had comments to make, and we just did it with new business. So this way, we didn't belabor the point in public on a nice evening where we had recognition.
Madam President?
Anybody from this end of the table? Ms. Foster?
Yeah, I just want to make a few comments as we wrap up the end of the year, because our next meeting is going to be after graduation. So just a few things. The Senate president from the high school called out the charity lacrosse game last Tuesday, which was, you know, to support two of our families who had a tragedy with the fire. Today, there was another one, I'm not sure actually if it did take place, another was a rain date, that Carl Sandberg and Jonas Salk softball teams got together to have another fundraiser for another family, several families impacted in Lawrence Harbor. I think it just continues to show the character of our students, of our staff, and our faculty. So I think it's just a testament to the good things that are going on in the district. I would want to just remind everyone, June 17th is our Relay for Life, again, a great community event. It's a great participation throughout... It's a great participation throughout people in the district and the community. It's at Lombardi Field. There will be a list circulated shortly for volunteers for our dung tank, so I'm sure we'll get a great number of that. The other thing is, you know, as Mr. De Prima alluded to, this time of the year is when we get to participate in some of these great recognitions. And next Tuesday, I believe, Tuesday or Wednesday is Senior Scholarship Night, as well as our Hall of Fame inductees. I will not be there because I have to be away on business. It's Monday? Thanks. But I'll be away on business. And I hate to call out individuals because I know there's so many people who do amazing things, and I always don't want to miss anyone, but I'd like to make a personal thank you to Nora Schmitz. So, anyone who knows Nora, she is full of tenacity, love of this community, and integrity. She's not one who wants to be up on that podium, I'm sure, but I'm very honored and happy she's being recognized. Anyone who walks the bricks at Lombardi, I get to look at my kids' names. It is a testament to her grit and determination that that's there, and she's a great asset to many nonprofits in town, giving her advice, her professional financial advice on the complex rules of anybody who's a 501(c)(3). There's many organizations in town that benefit from her knowledge, and personally, the Glass Slipper Project would not be here without her, so I congratulate her.
All right. Thank you. All right, Mr. Dunn?
Thank you, Madam President. Tonight was an extraordinary night. We did recognize 18 fabulous educators who have been recognized by their peers and their building principals, and it was just an incredible night to see the enthusiasm from their peers. We had a beautiful turnout to support these fabulous educators. With that said, we can't forget that we do have 700-plus educators in this district, whether it's sort of certificated personnel or paraprofessional, and they do a lot for this district. It's just not those 18, it's the entire staff. And we need to remember that we have dedicated professionals here who are doing the children's work. They're the ones that are driving the car, and they're the ones that are making this district very successful. With that said, we must remember that, you know, their day doesn't stop at 3 o'clock, as you know. Their day just begins sometimes because they go home, they do lesson plans, they do SGOs, they do emails, phone calls, they do student assessments, report cards, and of course, they spend a lot of money in their own pockets. So, we need to be fair here, and we need to recognize all the educators in the district because they all care, and they're the ones that have gotten us to the plateau that we're at educationally right now, and I want to sincerely thank everyone who has participated, and we are paying the benefits. With that said, I just want to support our business administrator, Joe Mara. He is certified. I'm going to go by what his numbers say. Obviously, there's this agreement here in the room this evening, and I feel that we will vet the information that Joe can present to us, but he is the certified business school administrator, and I will stand by his side at this moment and say that I'm for what he presented this evening. And if Joe can sit with us as a board and review everything, I would appreciate it, so we have a full understanding. But at this moment, he is our business administrator, and we will, of course, back him up at the moment. With that said, we did have two tragedies. As we know, in the school district, two families were impacted by fires in our town. Actually, there were three fires in our town within a two-week period. We had the issue in Lawrence Harbor, where we had a fire that impacted a family. We had a fire on John Street and Birch, and also, we had a fire on Firethorne. And it's just refreshing to see our school district come together, everyone, to support these three families. This is what we've been building, this is what we care about, and the entire community has come together, and especially the school district, the teachers. Andrew Buriello, our fabulous lacrosse coach, took it upon himself to drive this issue with the families, and there's others that I'm missing, and I do apologize, it's getting late. So, I just want to reaffirm where we stand as a school district, and that we do stand together as a community, and we do support one another fully, and that's what I love about Olbridge. So, thank you this evening. It was a great meeting, and thank you for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Mr. Dineoff?
Yes. Thank you. I just want to congratulate again all of the dedicated and caring educators and staff members that were honored here this evening. I was a student in this district for many years, and I had the privilege of having and learning from so many of them. And also, as Mr. Dunn said, it's not just these 18 individuals, but our entire faculty and staff, and I thank them for everything that they do and for really making a positive difference and impact in our students' lives every day. Thank you again for everything. Without your guidance and inspiration, I certainly wouldn't be sitting up here as a Board of Education member today. Thank you.
Ms. Hartman?
Yes, I would also like to congratulate all of the employees that were recognized tonight, and all of our employees, the teachers, staff, secretaries, paraprofessionals, everybody, for everything that they do for our children in this town, the education that they give them, the help that they give the parents. And I've always said this, that they basically are the second parents of these children, for the amount of time that they spend with them every day, and all of the work that they do for them, that they go above and beyond, all of them. And I just want to thank them for all of the hard work that they've accomplished. I know it's not an easy task, and when you have children coming out of high school, going to college, and then coming back and becoming teachers in the very district they graduated from, that's telling you something. So, again, congratulations to all of them, and also to the retirees. Congratulations, and I'm hoping that you all continue to have the best life you can. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hartman. There were some wonderful things said for each one of the recipients tonight. The accolades were flowing, the students that spoke were articulate, and just heartfelt words of appreciation for their teachers and their faculty. So, congratulations to all of those recipients, certainly those that are planning to retire. Good luck and smooth sailing. And I guess that's it. Now, I need a motion for close. Mr. Sittadino?
You know, as the superintendent of schools, I feel as though, in the future, this dialogue is going to happen at each meeting unless both parties come together. I will sit with them, whatever it takes, to have people share information, so that we don't have to do this in a public venue to share the information. I've sat between emails on both parties, trying to mediate. It doesn't always work out, but if we can come together with the best interest of the students of Olbridge in mind, I know both people have the best interest in what they believe in their mindset. Neither of these people are people looking to hurt anyone, and just coming together and finding a common cause and finding some common ground will benefit everyone, and especially, if we always remove ourselves from every situation, remember that without schools, without students, there is no school district. That's what it's about. So, I'll be willing to work with anyone.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Sittadino. I appreciate that. I need a motion for closed session for the purpose of...
Just a very brief discussion of the superintendent's contract.
Okay.
Then we'll make a motion to go into executive session to discuss minor item on the superintendent's contract. Dineoff will second.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Mr. Dineoff. Mr. Mara?
Ellis Forster?
Yes.
Mongan?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Dineoff?
Yes.
Hartman?
Yes.
De Prima?
Yes.
Andriani?
Yes.
Going into executive session.